Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The dog was helping.
Yeah. Good morning and welcome to the March 15th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our word for the day is Proverbs 11:12-13. That's easy to remember, right? "It is foolish to belittle one's neighbor; a sensible person keeps quiet. A gossip goes around telling secrets, but those who are trustworthy can keep a confidence." And Commissioner Kalo, the dog today, or is it Max?
It's the warden's.
Oh, the warden, dog warden.
Good morning. Today we have a Beagle-Corgi mix. She's probably about three to four years old, found in Elyria. Available tomorrow, the 16th. We have 31 other dogs over there, so come on over and take a look, thanks.
How do we do at the Rally to the Rescue? Did we get any dogs adopted on Saturday? Yes, good. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Okay.
Investments? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Appropriations? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Transfers? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Transfers? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Appropriations? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Travel? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Bills? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments today? Requisitions? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Travel? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Bills? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Number eight, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within Juris- of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a few issues I'd like to discuss with the Board in Executive Session. I do not have any potential hires I want to discuss today, but I do want to update you on some labor negotiations with United Oil Workers, United Steel Workers, sale of real estate, and a pending legal matter. All three of those subjects are allowable under the Sunshine Act for Executive Session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our meeting today, we go into Executive Session to discuss those items I've explained. Thank you.
Okay. Number nine, approve and waive the reading of the same for the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes of March 8, 2017? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Number 10, support amendments to the Ohio Revised Code and Ohio Administrative Code to prevent Lake Erie harmful algal blooms? Before we get vote on this, I'd like to ask Max Schaefer to come up. He is the one that brought this to our attention for our consideration. So Max, did you want to give us a little overview on this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the resolution itself outlines the history of this issue, where we currently stand on it, and what the Ohio Environmental Code is suggesting we do to fix the solution. We realize how much of an asset Lake Erie is, how vital it is to drinking water for millions of individuals throughout Ohio, and we have a serious issue that we've been plagued with, with harmful algal blooms. We know the pollution is preventable from reaching Lake Erie, and the amounts that cause this harmful algal blooms, it is phosphorus and nitrogen that leach into Lake Erie primarily from large-scale agriculture. That is the main factor in this. Cities, counties, local governments have already been regulated by the state and federal agencies to put specific limits on the amount of allowed flow into our region's waterways, yet there is no action on agriculture. So the four things that this resolution is calling for is requiring plans that prevent pollution, stop over-fertilizing of crops. There are specific limits that crops can't absorb, and farmers sometimes want to save cost, save time, and so they over-apply and put two-years' worth of fertilizer on their crops, three-years' worth. So we have testing apparatuses that work to say, this is the amount that's already in our system, this is the amount that would work to properly absorb for a full crop yield. The third is requiring plans to prevent pollution, calling for Ohio to enact new law requiring agricultural producers to develop and follow plans that detail the best management practices for their specific farms. Sorry, that's the first one. Just an overview, the first one. The third one, sorry, is improve compliance and enforcement. So that means dedicating adequate human and financial resources to seeing if farms are over-applying. And we're not talking about little mom-and-pop farms here, we're not talking about Fenix or anything like that, we're talking about huge industry here. The last one is setting nutrient pollution limits. Clean Water Act directs each state to establish water quality standards. In Ohio, it is very vague in what we set as our criteria. It just says that our direct surface waters be, quote, "free from nutrients entering the waters as a result of human activity and concentrations that create nuisance, growths of aquatic weeds and algae." We set specific limits, we've set specific limits in what we want to do to reduce these harmful algal blooms. We are tasked with reducing phosphorus by 40% over the next few years into Lake Erie, and so we have those specific numbers, but we don't have the numbers set to say, okay, this is the amount of phosphorus and nitrogen that is in our waterways. So our thought is if we have a number to reduce to, we need numeric sets of numbers to get to that point. So we have specifics here on what exact sections of the ORC and the OAC that need to be amended. Those discussions will happen if the state complies with all this, with ODNR, with Ohio Ag, with OEPAs, organizations like ours, and with business. You know, those specifics will be hashed out at a later point, we're just calling for it to happen, so.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is there any indication that fracking causes any of this to happen?
I mean, fracking definitely has an effect on groundwater. It is probably a different issue. The blue-green algae is actually, it's not actually, and the science side of it is not my strong point, but it's actually not a algae, it's a toxin, it's bacteria, cyanotoxin. And so that is the main issue when it comes to the harmful algal bloom. So fracking is in itself an issue, and we do see leaching of those chemicals into drinking water, but that is sort of a separate.
Different issue, okay. Thank you.
On your question on the fracking, it's been, there is data out there that, the small quakes that occur sometimes because of fracking actually make dry streams wet again. Certain ditches that have not seen water over a long period of time now may be seeing water, so you may have new paths of flow into rivers and streams that carry nutrients that have been remaining dormant in those areas. So in addition to, you know, possible groundwater contamination, that's basically with the chemicals that they're releasing, but it does change some of the surface conditions that could change the direction of runoff into rivers, lakes, and streams.
No, thank you.
Appreciate it, Max.
Thank you. Very important issue.
Yeah, I think it's just important to point out that's a, you know, it's a shared responsibility. Sometimes when people see legislation like this, they think that folks are picking on the farmers, and that's not the case here, it's a shared responsibility, but we all have to realize our role and what we play. I know when I was driving over this morning, I stopped for breakfast, I was pulling out of the parking lot, and I noticed all the salt that was covering the parking lot, and I thought, you know, that still ends up headed towards Lake Erie as well, too. And those are the small things that we just don't, we don't think about, but it's a shared responsibility. We certainly don't ever want to find ourselves in a position of what Lucas County and the Toledo area went through not so long ago, and I'm sure folks there thought it could never happen to them, but it certainly did, and we certainly don't want to have it happen here. And it's a great resource that we have. Obviously, we're still very concerned about Washington and the current president and his wishes to cut back on Great Lakes restoration funding from about $300 million to about $10 million. It's just really important that we be very careful about protecting our lake, and it's a great resource, but, boy, it can be harmed quickly if we don't take proper steps.
That's one of our discussion points. Well, Congresswoman Capra was at her town hall the other evening in Lorraine, and that was one of the discussions, cutting $300 million down to $10 million, how we're going to maintain the, you know, clean water. Extremely important, drinking water is my meeting with Max here today, and someone from his office, I mean, you've just got to talk about drinking water. Everything else sort of mixes up the message that it's got to be talking about just safe drinking water. I don't think anybody can say no to that, so maybe we can get past some of the partisan issues in regards to this.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention. So, so moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Number 11, approve the 2017 Permanent General Fund Annual Appropriation? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, let's talk a little bit about what happened here. As we all know, the sales tax goes into effect April 1st, a quarter percent increase. We'll start collections sometime, first collection last week of June, third week, depending on when they want to post the sales tax receipts. The Budget Commission's come back and has given us a $5.2 million increase, which is about net what we needed to break even. We have done some appropriations that we said we would do in regards to the dollars. New vehicles for the Sheriff's Department. We're looking at repairs that we don't have the numbers back on yet. They're still outlawed with the numbers, correct? Mr. Cortez?
We're doing the, we are already, we are already in the process of doing some of the capital improvements at the jail that were necessary. We picked the big ones, there's some rooftop units, definitely shower work, the showers. Let me explain that, because maybe you're going, oh, showers, right? No, the showers from water seepage, the walls were deteriorating to a point where you could push them over. So we needed a lot of work in those areas, they were very old and depleted. So we're doing that, we're doing some roof work, some HVAC unit work.
The locks, maybe?
The locks. I will tell you that I haven't finished up my conversations with Mr. Hammond, but the new telephone contract for the inmates to make phone calls, they're working with the vendor to bring us, we may not have to pay for the video surveillance system, as part of that contract, we may get this company to install the visitation system and some of that video that's been a problem for us. So if we don't do it through that contract, obviously, we're going to have to get through capital improvement. It's old, they can't get parts for it anymore, and the locks are definitely, they've had it. So those are some big things that we didn't, I'm sure you're going to speak to the fact that we-
Coroner, the prosecutor.
Coroner, the prosecutor. I met with the coroner, I met with his folks, got to meet with them again, but we did funnel some immediate need money over to them to push them in the right direction and of course additional prosecutors.
Additional prosecutor support staff, he was down five bodies total, and with all the new courts that are going on, having a hard time covering all of those courts, even when we get the, was it a million eight that went for the new recovery court? Judge Morales said Addus will be, alcohol drug abuse services will be administering. There was nothing there for support staff prosecutors to endorse.
Was it the state will give you money to-
Secretary of Paralegal.
Every special court, the state gives some grant money to put on, which eventually that grant money somewhat gets depleted and runs out, requires us to staff that court. It's not any good when you don't have any working in that court. And I don't mean from the court's perspective, I mean from the prosecutor, the assist staff that has needed to work in that.
Right, that has to do all the work, so we've moved forward on that. There's no additional money, so we're just about breaking even after those expenditures, and then the capital stuff, you know, we'll look at how that's going to go through, the notes are bonding eventually.
My understanding, and I started going through the budget, I was out yesterday, but I started going through it last week, we have not made additional appropriations except in those specified areas over the 2016.
Correct. Everything else is a state part.
I think that's necessary to tell folks that, but there are some obligations that are going to come due later in the year that we're going to have to deal with. Right now, we've just told everybody, let the dust settle. But we knew that the, we didn't have enough revenue for the 17 budget, which was a mirror of the 16 budget, there's some obligations and contracts that have to be met, and I think this summer we'll have to relook at some of those things, but right now you guys have said, keep the lid on.
No, we have to, because there's no more money, and the Budget Commission only gives us such a certificate number that we can't do anything else until that point, but I'm comfortable with the budget. Give me one second, Commissioner. I'm comfortable with the budget, with the budget director, and with the administrator, and working with the elected officials who had the immediate needs, what we told the public we're going to do with the money. Again, it follows, you know, 70-plus percent of our budget goes into safety forces, and the coroner's being overrun with opioid. There's actually a county, I got on a tweet today from the CCAO, and I don't remember which county it is, but they have to rent freezers.
It was in the paper today.
Oh, was it? Okay, I didn't get to that yet.
I think it was Sandusky.
No, it wasn't near a county, no, somewhere, I can look back, it's Cheryl Subler who sent it out, but they actually have to rent additional freezer space because of all the bodies.
It's Montgomery.
Is it Montgomery? Okay.
From the heroin epidemic.
There's more than one community that had to do that, as a matter of fact.
So it's been extreme, and our coroner's done a heck of a job with what he's doing.
Wait, Commissioner, I've been looking at, just a segue on the coroner and what you're talking about, the expenses. I was looking over the finances for the crime lab, and clearly, we have not been successful with the voters, with them to understand the crime lab issues. We're up in some areas four or five times the amount of testing we're doing.
Excuse me real quick, Stirk County coroner using mobile cooling units to store bodies because it's more ran out of space, which is can't in Ohio.
It can't.
The, while we have, while I've been able to stabilize the burn over at the crime lab, we've been running negative, we're not running negative, I think, we ended 16 not in the red, but we can't add the staff we need to meet the demands of all the testing that's coming through the front door. And it's not going to end anytime soon.
I just wanted to add to your comments, Commissioner Kalo, that, you know, once again, this is basically filling a hole, not that anybody's flush with cash, sometimes there's that perception out there, and was very disturbed by some postings that were being put online, primarily, I think, by folks who have wishes of reforming county government, claiming that because of the $10 million in property taxes that we collected, now we have this huge surplus, which once again, we get a, it was a $1.62 per every $100 collected, and so, which once again came down to about $162,000 on that $10 million we collected. So I just want to make sure people understand that there are folks out there who, I think, now are starting to specialize in alternative facts, but this is, I guess, I don't want this to be seen as some kind of spending spree, because it's not, these are things that have been put off for a long, long time. If folks only knew how bad things were at the jail, we have to end up, you know, subsidizing additional funds for the jail to keep things operational over there, but, you know, government for a long time has run into this pattern of just basically trying to get through another day, and, but, you know, you end up reaching the day where the roof on the house or the gutters need to be fixed, or the windows need to be replaced, and you can only stretch it so far. So just want to make everybody aware that we are not flush with cash. We're catching up on a lot of things that needed to be caught up on a long, long time ago, and as it relates to property taxes, you know, everybody worked hard to collect those funds, and most of them go to the schools as it should, as it should, but we receive a very small portion of that, so we're not running some big surplus as a result of the delinquent property tax collections. That's just about as fake as you can get when it comes to so-called fake news.
And it's coming from people who should know better, because they were commissioners, and they should realize where the money comes from when it's levy activity, so.
What was that, when the fiction's more exciting than the facts, print the fiction?
Right.
You know, putting profit numbers there doesn't inflame people, it doesn't, so I too saw the numbers that were put out there, and they were misleading at best, and I do believe that some folks know that, and they are tempting to mislead. The, we had complaints about our aggressiveness with getting these property taxes. Well, we also had something that hasn't been discussed about those property taxes. This community went to a massive, massive reception that was probably worse than what we've seen on the national level, and everybody knows how bad that was, and it could be suffered even more because of reliance upon the industries that were affected. Going out there and squeezing people out of their home like it's the Great Depression wasn't really in the best interest of our community. While we, while we did pursue those areas where we believe collection was sufficient, we tried to get people on payment plans and get them straightened out, to beat people when they're down without trying to help them along. I don't think is the answer either. So now things are better in the community, they're better in lots of places in our community, and we're working real hard to make sure that they, people are either on the payment, continue to make their payments, or there's other people now that we can collect from that were doing that. But for a lot of people, and a lot of fine people, not just bad people, because people think they're all bad, a lot of people that they would be surprised that they may live next door to in good neighborhoods, not just bad neighborhoods, were behind on their property taxes. So it was much like the heroin epidemic, it doesn't just happen in the seedy, bad areas that you think, well, it couldn't happen over here. So I'm glad that we're making such progress, and we're going to continue to make that progress on those collections.
And just unfortunate, the good, hard, solid work that the prosecutor's office, the treasurer, the land bank, working to get these dollars back into the community, they turn it around, turn it into a negative. That's, you know, unfortunate part. Did we make a, did I make a question? Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Number 12, oppose SB 72 prevailing wage. As introduced, this would allow political jurisdictions and universities to decide whether to pay workers less than the state required prevailing wage. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, a little bit, please. As I brought this up about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, at the last Commissioners' Association meeting, statewide board, this was brought to the board looking for endorsement. I believe Senator Huffman introduced the legislation. And again, basically, it was giving counties, cities, and townships the ability to, if you wanted to prevail wage, you have to opt in, if not, there's no prevailing wage in regards to funds spent on projects. There was a big argument there. The Commissioners' Association, and previously Ohio Municipal League and Township Association already endorsed this process. We had a long, drawn-out discussion at the Commissioners' Board meeting about supporting or not supporting. Eventually, it was supported by the CCAO, two to one. We had 20, there were 23 yes votes, and then on our side, there were 11 of us who voted against it, explaining that when you have prevailing wage, you put everybody on the same level playing field when it comes to bidding work. It doesn't have to be union, a lot of the time it is, but, you know, everybody starts the same, with a livable wage. And when you eliminate these guidelines, you leave it open for anyone, and the argument from one side of the board was, you asked for more tools in your local government, he's giving you a tool here. And from the other point, as I had said many years ago, with SB 5, it's the only tool he gave me was a screwdriver to screw my employees, so that conversation didn't go well with the governor at the time. But it was a long, drawn-out fight, again, opposed pulling prevailing wage. As a former union contractor who employed a lot of union prevailing wage workers who bid a lot of work, whether government or private sector, you're getting a certain requirement of a quality of worker, the trainings involved, workers' comp's taken care of, health insurance is taken care of, and I think overall, you get a better work product at the end of the day, so. And discussions here, the board back and forth in supporting opposing Senate Bill 72, it's just a backside, you know, to start back on the SB 5, you know, but taking little chunks at a time, so, again, appreciate the board and Commissioner Lundey, Commissioner Kokowski, you know, actually supporting the prevailing wage. I would hate to see that it becomes an opt-in if you want it. So that's about all my comments on this.
I mean, the purpose of Ohio's prevailing wage law is actually to ensure the taxpayers receive the best quality work product, you know, for the lowest possible price, and, you know, there's been claims about it saving millions of dollars on some of these projects that think the labor costs, I understand, somewhere around 25% on most of these projects. Sometimes you'll see maybe a $3 difference per square foot on some pricing, but the bottom line is, you want a skilled worker working on your project, and, you know, we have a responsibility to make sure the project is done well and done right the first time, and to make sure it's a quality work product when it's all finished, and, you know, the dumbing down of wages, I mean, if you pay peanuts, you know what you get, so. But there's been plenty of studies that have been done, I remember this coming up in committee in Columbus on many occasions, discussion about this, and there've been numerous studies done on the impact of repailing, repealing, rather, prevailing wage, and, you know, some of those consequences include lower wages for construction workers, reduced health and pension benefits for construction workers, reduced sales tax revenue, reduced corporate income taxes, it weakens the system of constructions, apprenticeship training programs, increases occupational injuries and associated costs that go with that. So, and also, something that people don't talk about, it increases construction work done by out-of-state contractors in your state, and I think the whole idea is try to keep it as local as possible, so. Senator Huffman, I've served with him, and a real, real sharp guy, real bright guy, but sometimes mischievous about things, and Senate Bill 72 is something I wasn't surprised when I saw him associated with it, but nonetheless, I certainly oppose trying to dump down the wages and jeopardize the quality of work when the taxpayers are paying for it.
Any further discussion on that? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Number 13, under community development, award various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance from the CHIP FY16 Private Rehabilitation Activities for home rehabilitation assistance, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders, and these being the most responsive complying with specifications. Number one, Solid Ground Construction Incorporated in Westlake, in the amount of $35,541 for Linda Mullins at 4048 Ivanhoe Avenue in Sheffield Lake for home rehabilitation work. Number two is Solid Ground Construction Incorporated in Westlake, in the amount of $37,635 for Kathleen Brunner at 247 Thelma in Sheffield Lake for home rehabilitation work. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Excuse me.
It distresses me no end that workers leaving Lorraine County that doesn't need to leave Lorraine County. Westlake certainly doesn't need all our money. We do, and I want to make this known, because people just see this little snapshot, we do send out a tremendous amount of offers to bid to our local folks, and we just don't receive the participation. I don't know if it's because the jobs are too small, they're too busy, I don't know. We've actually ramped our efforts upstairs to make sure that we're in contact, the word's
out, sometimes we do have a lot of folks even come out that view the job, because one of the requirements is to go out and you just can't blind bid this work, and we don't get bids. We're doing everything possible to keep this work at home, it's just very distressing when even just, Westlake, which is right across the border, is just too far for me. So we'll continue our efforts, but we have no choice, we don't get the quotes, and we get some responsive quotes, and we have to go with them, so I just want you to know that we're still working at it.
I know, you know, I've been to the meetings that Community Development has held and had with folks who could do this work, I know we've reached out to the BIA to work with them, and, but yes, you know, it continues to be very, very frustrating, and you know, as I've said before, if you're running a business and you're concerned you're going to have to do too much paperwork, please come in, we'll walk you through it, and so you can get back to doing the job and hopefully bidding on some of this stuff, but it is very frustrating for the money to go out of county, you know, even if it's neighboring Westlake, I'm sure there's plenty of contractors here who could do the work. So once again, we invite you to contact Community Development, or contact us here at the board, and we'll walk you through the process and make it as painless as possible, I don't think it's very painful to begin with.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Number 14, under the engineer, approve and enter into an emergency contract with US Bridge Cambridge for a cost not to exceed $79,065 for immediate repairs to Whitehead Road, excuse me, Whitehead Road Bridge number 0813 in Carlisle Township due to severely deteriorated bridge beams.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Number 15, advertise notice to contracts for Jones Road Bridge number 0223 and 0275 Culvert Replacement Project in Wellington Township. Notice is to be in the Chronicle on March 17 and 24th, open at 2:00 PM on April 11.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Cordez?
I don't have any further comments this morning, thank you.
No good stories to tell?
No, no, no good stories to tell, I think we had enough, you know, nope, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Kukowski?
Okay, Thursday was a pretty busy day, first thing in the morning, I had a conference call regarding our stepping up initiative, it's, we're talking about a two-day workshop that's coming up, at how our process works in Lorraine County, and how we can better address mental illness and co-occurring addiction issues, when people are in crisis and trying to defer them from going to jail. Thursday evening, we had our annual advisory council meeting for the Lorraine County Health Department, and I have given each of my commissioners a copy of their annual report. It was less than about an hour, as I was leaving, Mr. Cordez, you might find this interesting, I saw they were working over at the 911 building on the tower, it was dark, like probably 8 o'clock, 8:30 at night, and they were over there working on our tower, so hopefully it's, I saw the light flashing, so it must be operational.
Well, we have to put the warning up there, whether it's operational or not, we don't want anybody running airplanes running.
True, true.
The, so, the tower's up, I will tell you, if you drive by there, I'll warn you now, it's an optical illusion, it's not leaning, it's not the leaning Tower of Lorraine, but with the way the building is and the trees, and it will give the illusion that it possibly is leaning. I went out there last night, and I was thinking, man, I know people are going to say this thing is leaning, so.
Did you level out?
Well, you know, they put the base in, and it's been shot, and so it's just one of those illusions, when you look at different angles, it could look like the tower's actually leaned over a little bit, but, so please, let's not get those scathing emails that we built the bent tower and the whole nine yards. But yes, work is ongoing, we're progressing nicely, we have quite a few things to do over there, but this is just the first part of many things to come, and we're out to bid, I believe, for the exterior work.
Yeah.
On the building, so I'm trying to get all of the exterior work done, we're still working on equipment, that's dragging, consoles are dragging, a lot of the inside stuff that we need to do for the equipment is taking longer than I had anticipated, but I want to get the building wrapped up, secure, safe, and get all of that work in the parking lots and all that done. Inside, we can progress as we need to, but I want to make sure the building is self-done by summertime, so we can do installation hopefully in the fall.
Good. So at the Health Department meeting, that was the presentation of the 2018 budget and the 2016 annual report, so. Then Saturday, I went to rally at the rescue at Midway Mall, they had a good turnout, our dog kennel was there, we had some volunteers from the kennel, and they brought to my attention, reminding me that we're going on three years that we have not had to put a dog down due to space issues at the kennel, so we have a really good group of volunteers and rescue groups and our staff working together, and when we start to get full, email blasts go out and the radio stations, you know, we just have a good way of making sure that we're not having to put dogs down, so I'm really proud of all that's happening over there. Monday, I went out to Columbia Township, they had a meeting regarding gunshots and fire, gunfire, and bullets penetrating people's houses. The only question that I brought back with me, and I actually asked Sandy to check with our 911 department, is what our policy is when somebody calls 911 and what they're told. Some people said that our dispatchers were saying, well, you're allowed to shoot in the townships, but I didn't think it was up to them to make that call, that it should go to the Sheriff's Department, to let them determine.
Well, since I'm responsible to you for the operations there, let me respond to that.
Okay.
Our dispatchers are pretty fine folks, they have all the policies, procedures in front of them. I wish I could tell you that occasionally, there's not a stray comment or an off-chartered remark made during a conversation, we try to keep it down to a minimum. It may or may not have been said, which I can conclusively say, no, Commissioner Kukowski didn't say that, but what I really do need to be able to verify that is, I would need, you know, more specific, so I can narrow the window.
Do you know what the policy is, though, when somebody calls for gunfire?
When somebody calls for gunfire, we dispatch a resource.
Okay, well, that's what I thought.
We don't decide, you know, that gets given over to the officer in charge at the Sheriff's Department, to make a decision on what course of action needs to be taken. Our dispatchers, again, they're fine people, but they are dispatchers. I've been over this, I've met with the Sheriff's people, and I met with the person over the officers in charge for policies and procedures, but we do have an occasional stray call. So anytime that happens, and you get, please let me know immediately, so I can go back to the tapes. We tape everything, we have it all there, I'm not looking to beat somebody, I'm looking to use it as a training and an improvement piece, because we cannot screen every calls, every call, excuse me. As you know, less than a year ago, I implemented quite a big quality assurance program down there on the calls, and monitoring the video, and sampling a large amount of the calls, the performance has improved significantly, we now rate each shift, we rate each dispatch based upon a certain sampling of their calls, and we grade them, and things have really remarkably improved exponentially. Commissioner Lundey, you were in some front-end stuff we did with the City of Elyria and the hospitals on dispatch times, I think we learned a few things there that I was very pleased with, so overall, I believe our performance is stellar, but I still need to catch those little stray ones, as much as possible, so I'll check on it, but it's going to be hard there.
I just wanted to make sure that, what our policy was, that's all.
Our policy is that the officer in charge.
Okay, good.
And I just wanted to echo, Commissioner, that having attended some of the quality meetings that are held with the hospital and with City of Elyria, that the feedback has been very positive, and I know it's hard to say in government, but believe it or not, lots of words of praise about the substantial progress that we've made in improvement, and it's always nice to hear, so Jim's done a good job over there, making sure that when people have concerns, we always ask them, let us know when it happened, what the time was, the day was, so that we can isolate the tape, listen to it, take a look, and you know, walk through what took place, and then discuss it more in those meetings, but the group has been very pleased with what we've been doing in our quality control improvements.
That would be the end of my report.
Yeah, it's a busy week all over. Friday, NOAC had their quarterly board meeting, facility planning area boundary was changed in regards to the Pheasant Run subdivision, which we'll be having our public hearings coming up, but the service goes to Lagrange Village, like to thank everyone involved.
Commissioner, as soon as we got the notice on that, I think I CC'd you, you all three on that email, in fact, Matt, I confused you a little bit, I was sending it to another Matt, and I seldom tell a commissioner what to do, I would like to clarify that, but you did come back and say, okay, but we're applying for those low-interest loans to EPA, and looking at US Rural, trying to get some loans for those folks that are going to be less than 2% on, and also, we'll look at the options of possibly going out 30 years, I don't like that, the carrying costs are significant, but I want to bring enough to the meeting to demonstrate to those folks, we have great concerns for all the costs that they're going to bear, but that's not your fault, and we'll go over that with the residents at that point, but I am seeking, on behalf of you, every possible lower-cost solution available that we can help these folks with. But I had to have that change in the facility, couldn't do anything without that change.
Right, so we've got that, and I'd like, again, thank NOAC, Gray Scalucci, the director, and their staff, working coordinating with us, so that can move forward on the Pheasant Run project, so they can continue to flush toilets. I serve on the Emergency Food and Shelter Board for the United Way of Lorraine County, we met and approved our dollars going forward for Phase 34, to handle those people who have utilities issues, food issues, and shelter issues, the land bank, I mean, the food bank, Second Harvest is a great partner with us. Also, in regards to NOAC, I'd forgotten, we did lay out our 2017 federal and state legislative agenda, working cooperatively, again, with ODOT and the feds, on, you know, strengthening some of our needs here, whether it's asset management using multimodal, including that in funding, as we all know, we're part of a special transit grant from our TLCI to look at how we're going to move forward, but it's a nice little piece if you have nothing else to read. Again, I met with, I think, Max and Ari from the Ohio Environmental Council, speaking about issues going forward, whether it has to do with the water quality and/or alternative energy, not facts, and we talked about the issues with LeadCo and moving forward with that, with the Officer Win Program. Also, I said I attended Congresswoman Capter's Town Hall Monday evening at Lorraine High, nice turnout, probably 100 people there, and Congresswoman has always did a nice job informing what's going on in DC. Also, I want to thank you out to Dick Conick, Cliff German, Tony Gallo, Tim Alcorn, for putting together the American Polish meeting with the Council General last evening at German's Villa. The Council General did a great job of explaining how they want to expand in Ohio both ways, trade, Polish investment here, because it's almost like being in Poland, they mirror each other, the whole north coast of Ohio, because of the large, you know, immigrant Polish population we have. Again, a very nice job on that. Tuesday, my meeting was canceled because of the blizzard of 2017, I went in a lieutenant meeting in Columbus, they canceled.
Was that the Trump blizzard?
Yeah.
They had to materialize it under delivery?
[laughing].
Excuse me, sorry for that, but.
But it was a meeting in regards with the DRC, Department of Corrections, to explain what they're going to do for us at a county level with county commissioners in regards to not taking felony fives to state prisons anymore.
I think it's still seriously, because this.
I had a meeting, it was canceled, but that was our discussion points on Tuesday, I'll be in Columbus Friday, I think I'm in Columbus Friday, so I'm sure some of that discussion will come up, I'm with talked beforehand, and we'll reschedule meeting with the DRC.
Commissioner, unfortunately, you know, a lot of felonies have pleaded down to fives, which, you know, and a couple of things will happen with that, not only will we have to deal with the felony fives ourselves, but I think there's going to be more of a reluctance to try to give people an opportunity at a lesser charge to try to correct themselves because of the incarceration issues. I don't believe they're looking at the whipsaw effect of this whatsoever, and the long-term ramifications.
Well, I think it just carries forward what the current administration was trying to do with eliminating the population within the state prison centers, so we'll see where it goes again. Again, concerns with indigent defense funding, it looks like we're going to be in the low 40s this year, and then probably 40% for the next biennial because of less funding coming into the funding streams that support it, so we'll be discussing that with the state legislature, actually, I was told Representative Manning is in charge of that committee now, since Representative Boos is now Commissioner in Huron County, he was terming it out, who helped us get it to 50% all those years, so hopefully we can find a way to re-revenue it.
Re-revenue, is that one of those new words?
It's a new word, we're going to re-revenue it.
Re-revenue.
Yes, so, and everyone have a safe St. Patty's safe, please, as you know, drinking and driving, please be careful, call a friend.
Drinking and driving, please be careful, how about, don't drink and drive?
I am not one to slow down the local economy. End of my report.
Okay. Also enjoyed a meeting this week with the Ohio Environmental Council, had a chance to work closely with them when I was in Columbus, believe me, they do very good work, I think certainly their work is going to be even more important and significant with some of the policies of current administrations, both in the state and in Washington. Was unable to attend the Lorraine City Schools meeting, that was held at El Centro, and very important for the community to have a greater understanding of the state's movement to take over control of the Lorraine City Schools, as I said, I find that very troublesome, I think that everybody's been working very hard, the administration and the teachers, to improve the quality of education in Lorraine and to meet the standards, the tough part is, if you can imagine being a high jumper and they keep raising the bar on you, and get it up so high where probably even Superman couldn't fly over it, it becomes a little frustrating, but everybody's working very hard to provide a quality education for the students of the Lorraine City Schools, and I just think it's really critical, as the mayor has said, that we have, preferably Superintendent Graham continued to be at the helm, so there's local leadership who understands just what's going on in the community. On Friday, had a chance to attend the Urban League Diversity and Inclusion Conference that was held at Lorraine County Community College, Dr. Vivian Jackson came in from Georgetown University, and really made it a working couple hours, pushing organizations and pushing everybody at their tables to really drill down on all the various individual definitions that we have as it relates to diversity, when you actually stop and think about it, she actually had us put it down on paper, how we identify ourselves based upon race and age and gender and socioeconomic status, our education, our religion, and, you know, it just goes on and on and on, which goes to show how you can put probably just two people in a room, there's going to be extreme diversity between those two people, but thought it was very well done, and very much enjoyed, and congratulations to the Urban League on a successful event there. Later in the day, made my way over to the Riverfront for the announcement of the Rockin' on the River schedule, and once again, always enjoy meeting Bob Early, that guy's just a bundle of energy, just, and a funny guy, too, so, he was commenting about bringing in a Neil Diamond-type concert this year, and he was talking about all his reservations, and he said, so if anything goes wrong, blame me, but I think he'll probably be surprised, I think he'll probably get a pretty strong turnout for that, but.
I got my season passes in the mail yesterday, Wednesday.
Oh, great, great, yeah, I mean, you can't beat it, they were keeping the shows at $5 apiece, and still getting about, what, 5,000 or 6,000 people come down for the event, it's just a great opportunity to showcase Lorraine County, to showcase Lorraine, to showcase our lakefront, and thank you to NOPEC, I guess, which has become a major sponsor this year of the Rockin' on the River. Also had the opportunity to attend the Benai Israel synagogue event that was held in Lorraine on Saturday, unfortunately, following some of the vandalism that took place over there off of Meister Road, very well attended, I was pleased to see so many people there from the greater Cleveland area, geez, one family came in from Ashbyola, a lot of folks there from Beechwood and Shaker and Cleveland Heights, and a lot of folks made the drive in to show their support, and, you know, as we said at that event, you know, we reject hate, very concerned and disturbed that someone would do something like this, and there's folks there at the event said, we always believe that love conquers hate, so hopefully, this was just an isolated incident, we won't see this again. incident, we won't see this again.
Board Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Any public comment today?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning?
Morning, Jerry.
Morning.
Morning.
We know who you are, but you still need to state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Gerald W. Phillips, my address is 461 Winwood Way, Avon Lake, Ohio, 44012. I want to talk about the recent sales tax increase. On behalf of the residents, citizens, taxpayers, and electors of Lorraine County, and as a representative of the Ohio citizens for honesty, integrity, and openness in government, I do hereby make a formal demand upon the commissioners to place on the ballot at the next general election, November 7, 2017, the question of the repeal of the recently enacted sales tax increase passed on December 14, 2016. The process and procedures followed and used to pass the sales tax increase was both illegal, unlawful, and violated basic principles of honesty, integrity, and openness in government. Commissioner Matt Lundie voted against this tax increase because of his commitment to his campaign pledge, although he thought there was a financial need. Commissioner Lori Kokoski flip-flopped on this issue. At stake here is the public confidence in the process. Therefore, I formally request that you honor the above demand. If you honor such a demand, I will assist you in educating the public concerning the merits of the tax increase, the financial need for any tax increase, cost-cutting alternatives, and informing the public. You must do the right thing. If you fail to honor this request, you will force me, on behalf of the residents, citizens, taxpayers, and electors of Lorraine County, and as a representative of Ohio citizens for honesty, integrity, and openness in government, limited, to pursue other alternatives to protect the citizens, residents, taxpayers, and electors' right to vote, including any and all legal challenges and means to protect the right to vote. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Jerry, the only comment I have there is when you say illegal. There was nothing illegal about what we did. As someone who sat up here a long time, you can come back to the microphone, you're an attorney, you know how to respond.
I didn't want to get into it.
You made some comments there, Jerry, that said illegal, there was nothing illegal, it was a vote.
Well, you didn't follow Roberts' Rules of Order, you didn't go through the motion for reconsideration, and you didn't hold the public hearings. So, honor the request, and we won't go, we won't go there, that way.
Our job is fiduciary responsibility for county government.
I understand, but I'm willing to help you, but do the right thing, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the board? So, now I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.